All right, we are here. First of all, let me welcome everybody that's here tonight. We appreciate your attendance and those that watch my TV. We appreciate you being here as well. If we could stand, please, I'll have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Come us all with grace for the day and with blessings that you provide for us on a daily basis. We would ask that you would enter this chamber tonight and be part of our decision making for, if we include you, the decisions will be right. Grant us a portion of your wisdom as we debate the issues of our city, lest those in our community that are sick, whether it be COVID, whether it be any type of sickness that would follow. We just ask that you would be with them again. But with us in this night, for the day tomorrow, we've got prayer in the sun today. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all. Do you want to do that now?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we change our agenda in that we do away with the request for a closed session. And then I'll have a further adjustment to the agenda after that.
Okay, there's a second to that.
Second.
Okay, most please, a second. Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
And Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Further change to the agenda, Mr. Mayor, is that I move that we add item two on the new business to be a resolution approving an employment agreement with the city manager.
Second.
There was a motion made second for moving that item down to number two on the new business. Any concerns, councilor, regarding that? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
And Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Okay, let's move on. We have a special presentation tonight from Davenport Public Utilities Entertainment that represented now. We have now is here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm doing a really good job on this school system.
Well, Mayor, City Council, tonight, we do have Davenport, our financial advisor, here to present to us the second phase of our borrowing. Back in 2018, we did borrow the first phase for part of the middle school. We borrowed about 18.5. That included the middle school, few little projects that the city has, as well as a bus. But tonight, we're here to do the final phase to ensure that the middle school proceeds as planned. Kyle?
Well, thank you, Tanya, and Mr. Mayor, members of council. Nice to see everybody this evening, as always. Everybody hear me all right? As Tanya mentioned, this really is, we're talking about tonight, phase two of the school financing. And so everything we're going to talk about in terms of borrowing new money for the school has really been baked into the plan here for a couple of years. So it's, in essence, nothing new. We understand the bids are in on the middle school project. And so the primary portion of speaking this evening is really to talk through the schedule and maybe just kind of a refresher on how it is we get the balance of the funding for the middle school project. So we'll talk through that. And then we also have, Mr. Mayor, members of councils, a little bit of, hopefully, a good surprise. Given how low rates are, we may have an ability to refinance some existing debt. We'll show you what that looks like. Okay, and so, again, I think you know who we are, and obviously, nice to see everyone and hope everybody's having a good New Year. And so the balance of the background here, I won't spend a whole lot of time with. But I think as we move to page number two here, what we're really talking about is borrowing about $2.9 million. That'll finish off the middle school project that goes with, basically, about 17-plus million that was borrowed back in the 2018 time period. Those two pieces together will fully fund the new middle school project. We say here under the goals and objectives that we want to measure the potential impact of the school financing on the city's debt capacity and debt affordability. So really, what that means is if we go do this, are we going to be in compliance with our policies? And will we need anything new in terms of revenues, a tax increase? We'll cut straight to the chase and say that neither one of those are an issue, meaning this is all part of the plan that council and the city enacted a couple of years ago. And so by virtue of moving forward with this, we will maintain compliance with their policies. And also, the funding for all of this was baked into the budget going back several years. And so there's really no new dollars needed. It's all sort of, again, to finish off what was started a couple of years ago. And lastly, goal and objective number three here is to introduce a potential opportunity to refinance some outstanding sewer fund debt. We'll talk through that. Again, we've got a couple of million dollars, given how low rates are, and given the fact that we're going through this process on the school anyway, our recommendation is to just see if we can't go out while we're going through the school process and refinance some existing debt for savings purposes. We'll show you a couple of pictures here, just simply graphs in terms of how low interest rates are. This first graph is for tax-exempt interest rates. And you probably remember from last summer when we did our last refinancing, seeing something similar to this as the market was kind of settling out a little bit. We've really seen over the last six months as it continued settling out in terms of interest rates. There's obviously a lot going on in the world, and so that can impact what happens in the marketplace. We don't control that. You don't control that, which is part of the reason we like moving quickly here while we like where the market is in trying to capture the favorable environment that we have. This next page shows essentially the same information, the taxable interest rates. The only reason we show you this is the refinancing, one of the options of doing that refinancing will be on a taxable basis. That's all dictated by tax law, not necessarily something we have a whole lot of choice over. In either case, whether it's tax-exempt interest rates or it's taxable interest rates, they continue to be at very, very low levels. We'll show you just one slide here in terms of the city's credit ratings. Kudos to the city council, the city as a whole, manager and finance director, certainly, as the city enjoys very strong credit ratings. In fact, our Standard &amp; Poor's rating is as strong as can be. And hopefully, that green, yeah, does show up on the screen up there in terms of that AAA rating from S&amp;P is as strong as we can possibly have. And so what that allows us to do is to go out and borrow these dollars for the school project and hopefully refinance and do all of that at the lowest possible interest rate. And so, again, we'd just like to show that, to remind you, as you start a new year and a new budget process, you do enjoy those ratings. They've been hard-earned, and they should be a benefit to us as we go through this process. So with that, we'll give you a couple, sort of what we call assumptions and results as it relates to the school financing. There's some more detail to go with this. But basically, what we're going to do over the course of the next six years or so days is to go out and finance about $2.9 million. That'll be that balance of the funding that's needed for the school. We're going to ask the banks for two different options. And when we do this, we go through a competitive process that puts commercial banks all in competition with each other. Makes no difference to us if it's local banks, if it's regional banks, if it's national banks, the more the merrier in terms of the bids. And so all of those particular banking institutions, again, whether it's local or big national banks, will have a chance to compete for this and provide the city with their best terms and conditions. We're going to ask for that over a 15-year term and a 20-year term. All of those will fit within our plan and our strategy that was set forth a couple of years ago, and it'll give us a couple of different options to weigh and bring back to you as a council before you need to make a decision. Within all the planning we've done, we've assumed a 3.5% interest rate. We certainly don't know what we're going to get back. We would expect that it will be lower than that. But part of what we're doing here is just to go through the process and be able to bring you that information back before you, as a council, need to make a final decision. We'll show you what that time schedule is. Lastly, last couple boxes here at the bottom of the page, you're really demonstrating that by virtue of going through this, our critical debt policies, which you see their debt service to expenditures and debt to assessed value, city will maintain compliance with those policies. And possibly, most important at the bottom of the page, there's no need for additional revenue and/or a impact to the tax rate by virtue of going through this. And so that's the summary there on the school financing piece. We'll talk here for a page or two on the refinancing opportunity. And so, again, in our role as your advisor, working closely with the city manager and finance director, we watch the city's outstanding debt and watch what the market's doing. And we think what we have here is an opportunity with some existing 2012 bonds. Those are issued for sewer projects, to self-supporting utility system, separate and aside from the general fund. But what we have there is about $3.8 million outstanding at a 3% interest rate. You can see that at the table on the right-hand side of the page. And as low as a 3% interest rate was the time that financing was done, we expect that can be brought down fairly substantially, given where current market rates are. And so what we're recommending doing is while we go through this process on the schools, put the same banks in competition with each other to refinance this existing debt. We're not going to extend the final maturities. You keep the same final maturity and simply go from a higher rate to a lower rate, very similar to if you've got a mortgage, if you had a mortgage and said, you know what, I want to bring that from a higher rate to a lower rate because overall interest rates are lower and thus bring my payment down. That's the same process we're talking about here. Given the way tax law is structured, there's a couple of different ways. We're going to ask the banks to give us those options. It's what's called a taxable advance refunding. There's a tax-exempt forward pricing. There's a couple of different ways we can ask by virtue of when the call date and when the prepayment date is on those existing bonds, all of which will comply with the tax code. We've run this all by your bond counsel, Sands Anderson. And so really, the goal here is to provide as many different ways and options for the banks to give us a nice result. And we'll be able to take that all in, run the numbers, bring it back to you as a city and a city council to act on in the coming months. In terms of an estimate here to say, okay, what do we think we might be able to save? And this is very much just an estimate. We don't know until we get the bids back. The thought is, given where rates are, it might be in the range of $15,000, $20,000 a year for the sewer fund, which in total ends up being about, you know, $115,000, $120,000 over life alone. Very much an estimate. We'll see what that looks like when we come back and also be able to compare the various other terms and conditions the banks may provide to us. So it really leads us to our next steps and where we go from here. We're obviously talking this evening. We don't need anything formal in terms of action from the council. But where we'll really be going here is sending, again, that competitive RFP out to the banking institutions by the end of the week. And so that is in process, and that'll be going out. I'm understanding you have a school board meeting coming up that'll be looking at the contract on that middle school, kind of separate and aside to what we're doing, but we're very much cognizant of that. And that really takes us into early February. We'll get those responses back on both the middle school financing and the refinancing. We'll be able to run all those numbers, share them with staff, work through the legal council, such that we'll work our way through early February and the publishing of a couple of public hearings, meaning a single public hearing that is required to be held at the council meeting where you take action, just by virtue of the Public Finance Act, all leading up to February 22nd. And we'll be back to you with all the bids in hand, all the information you'll be able to see ahead of time. And we'll, at that point, ask council for a formal decision after we've got all that good information in hand in terms of what the banks can or can't do. And so that February meeting really is kind of the critical meeting, so to speak. And after that, we'd be able to move quickly to closing, such that funds would be in hand, basically, in the first week or so of March, and thus the middle school project can move forward. So that, Mr. Mayor, is really our presentation, and I have no overview. Happy to answer any questions and certainly happy to see everybody this evening.
Okay, Kyle, thank you very much. Any questions, councilor?
No.
No, okay. Randy, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to reiterate at a very high level, the middle school project, construction bids came in the middle of last month. The project remains on budget based on those bids, and the school board is scheduled to consider and likely award that contract next week. I'd like to recognize and thank Superintendent Tillot and also Mr. Pappas, both of whom are here today. If you had any school-related questions, they want to be able to answer them for you. And to reiterate a couple more things that Kyle said, this has been part of the plan. This level of debt for schools has been part of the plan for several years. The council and community established the tax rate to pay for this debt previously, so there is no additional tax rate implication of the decision that you're being foreshadowed tonight. And as Kyle said, there will be public hearings likely at the end of February, if not end of February, certainly first meeting in March. So the public will have an opportunity to see the details and speak to it. Additionally, one thing that the city council could consider as we move forward with this, the PMS project, second-phase borrowing, is whether or not it would be a good time to include the turf field replacement, also as part of this process by which we go out and solicit potential debt scenarios. The middle school field, which is also the high school field, was installed in 2008, and so it is 12-plus years at this point. Those fields have a useful life of eight to 10, if you care for them real well. We have cared for it really, really well. But even that has run out, and that field needs to be replaced. This would be an opportunity to do that. It is a relatively small amount of additional debt. It could fit within our debt guidelines that Kyle was speaking about previously. Would not, in and of itself, have an additional impact on the tax rate, meaning we could fund it with what we have now in the debt fund. So if council would like us to consider that, we would need a motion tonight so that we know what your express intent is. And then if you make that motion and pass it, then we'll ask Kyle and his firm, when they go out, to include at least two scenarios. One is a kind of a standalone add-on, which is severable, and one as part of the blended 15-year alternative that he spoke to, to see if the presence of that additional principal might help to pull that overall interest debt rate down just a little more. So that's not a final approval, but if you'd like us to do that, we would need some direction this evening.
Let me just say, Randy, you and I have had the conversation. I've had the conversation with all members of council. They concur with including the turf for the football field. It's time to do it, and it's a good time to do it. Let me just say that, you know, finance is not my strong suit, but the folks who put this together, Randy, your staff, Davenport, this council, have just done a remarkable job in putting together a plan that I think, at the end of this, will save the city lots of money. And that's always a good thing. So if someone would offer that motion, we can clean that up pretty quickly.
Slow movement, Mr. Mayor. Side side.
Okay, got a minute. Motion moved in a second. Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Appreciate it. Kyle, thank you so much.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Nice to see you all, and we'll see you in about a month, a little bit over.
Yeah, it's good. Thank you, sir. Okay, next item on our agenda, we have to elect a vice mayor, and we will open for nominations right now. Mr. Mayor, if I could, if Wayne agrees, I'd like to do all of these at one time.
Yes, sir.
Under one resolution.
Yes, sir.
Okay, for vice mayor, Kerry L. Freeman. For city manager, Jay Randall Wheeler. For the city clerk, Kimberly Healy. And for the city attorney, Dean Wayne Moore, Dee Wayne Moore. And for deputy city clerk, Christina Snapp.
Okay, thank you, buddy. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion made in second that we adopt those resolutions with those names inserted. Any comments, concerns, or council? All right, Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
I'm staying.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
And Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, thank you, Kim. All right, let's move on to audience for visitors. Is there anyone here tonight who'd like to address council on any issue? We'd be happy to hear from you at this time. If not, okay, we'll move on to approval of minutes of the regular session, December 14th.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve our minutes of our regular session of December 14th, 2020.
Second.
A motion made in second. We got those minutes. Any concerns, councilor? Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, so we want a new business, signed one, resolution making appointments Hampton Roads Planning District Commission and the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization. Do you want to prepare the motion with some names?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution, making appointments to Hampton Roads Planning District Commission and the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization, both being Gordon C. Helsell Jr.
Second.
Thank you. Eddie. All right, we had a motion second. I thought I heard my name. Okay, okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion made in second that we adopt that resolution with that name asserted. Thank you, buddy.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
And Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. All right, the votes over there?
Item two on the new business, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving an employment agreement with the city manager.
Second.
All right, a motion made second regarding a manager's contract. Council, we've all talked about that. Just want to tell the public, one of the reasons that we did not have our closed session was because council was closing down the manager's contract with him, and we talked about it with ourselves. So it's proper to do it this way. Okay, so we have a motion made, was there a second? I'm sorry.
There was.
Okay, motion made second that we confirm the manager's contract.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
And Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you, Kim. I have a good comments on city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I mean, a couple things to say. First of all, thank you for your vote on the last item. I'm looking forward to continuing to do work for you as your city manager for at least the next few years, if not beyond. Got a look. One other thing, and council is aware of this, but I thought it would be helpful to bring this to the community's attention. We're asking the people's help. This is, this is Massacre Point. This is up on the hill at Massacre Point, and most people in Pecosa are familiar with Massacre Point. It's got a park like quality. It's very well kept by our Public Works Department. They treat it like a park, but we have some people, and they're not always from Pecosa. In fact, the last ones previous to this that we're aware of are actually from another community, but they treat it like something different than a park. And I'll show you, it's just a couple of pictures. That's the top of the hill, and those ruts, that four-wheel-drive vehicle foot in that top of the hill are probably a foot deep and even wider than that. It will require significant repair, significant time, public works, and it really just defaces what is otherwise, and very beautiful and really appreciating the community asking. What we're asking our members of our community to do is, if you see someone up on that hill, first of all, there shouldn't be no vehicles up on that hill, with the possible exception of the capable city work vehicle. If you see a vehicle up there conducting this type of activity, you would appreciate it very much if you could pick up and call them right then and there and call them 911. More often than not, this type of damage happens at night when it's dark and is not discovered until the next day. But we really need people's help. We know there are people at Massacre Point pretty much almost 24 hours a day in season because of the nature of the boat ramp and the work moment and other people that are out there. If you see something, please do say something. One person in a few minutes in a four-wheel-drive hill can really tear it up. And we've had, you know, I think seven incidents of serious vandalism like that in the last few years, in addition to the incidental stuff that we get more often. You know, as we were processing this one, we had to deal with yet another one. It's contagious. People see somebody doing that, of course, and I deal with them too. So we ask the community, so if you see somebody doing that, call 911. It is, it is destruction of public property. It is appropriate to call 911. Please do, and that'll help our police department figure out, first of all, stop and quickly determine the happenstance. That's all I have, sir. Okay?
Vice Mayor, you have it?
Well, good to see you back up here.
Thanks, sir.
And thanks, all of y'all, for the vote for vice mayor, and just ask everybody in the public to stay as safe as you can. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Kerry. Buddy?
Randy, I wonder if we could look into what it would cost to put some motion sensor lights up at the perimeter of that parking lot and maybe even a camera that will record it, not necessarily live. And I know that from previous discussion with the chief, we can't ticket anybody from a camera, but that might give us an idea as to who to go talk to about not doing it again.
Yes, sir. We are working on that now.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
All, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, buddy. Davis?
Thank you. I have no comment.
Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just, of course, want to welcome you back to council chambers and just really reiterate how important it was to include that turf field replacement in this refinancing. I've got the privilege to coach high school football, and I can tell you that field is much appreciated, very well-kept, and is used, I would go as far to say nightly during the school year. And it's not just, you know, our school groups, but it's our youth teams, and I can tell you, other visiting teams appreciate and enjoy that field, too. So I think that's really important and something the city really loves. And I know I'll enjoy seeing new turf on that field in the next few years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Thomas. Buddy?
Yeah, I'd like to welcome you back to Council, Gordon, and welcome Vice Mayor Freeman back to his vice mayor position, and thank and congratulate at the same time Randy for accepting the new contract. Most of the people in the city have no idea how much he has saved this city in terms of dollars, okay, and all the advantages we have as a result of that, okay? He's done an excellent job, him and the city staff. I received an email this past week from a gentleman who told me that he drove by the Public Works Department and saw a couple of new trucks that looked like they were fairly new and in good shape, and they'd had Snow Palace put on them, and they were out there practicing to get ready for the snow event that did not show up, but was supposed to. to. And it was glad, I, I was really glad to hear somebody recognize that and appreciate that, because while other cities may be doing things virtually, okay, our city employees are out there, because you can't virtually clean the streets, okay? I don't know if you could have gotten anywhere if you got out of the city had we had had one, but you could have gotten around the city of Pecosa, okay? And so, our city does a really great job, and I think they ought to be recognized for that. Thank you very much, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you, Bud. Let me, let me comment just a little bit on the field. Randy and I had, on the football field, Randy and I had this conversation last week, and then I met, I've talked to everybody that's here, all of the council members that are here tonight, and I just want to say I appreciate, you know, the unanimous vote concerning that. It, it, we, we're probably, probably the envy of the district when it comes to a football field. And, and there's no place in the world that more Pecosa people gather, I don't think, than our, than our, our stadium there. So, I'm, I'm glad that we're doing this. I'm happy that it's, you know, it's going to be looked into, and I, I think we can, I think they'll make it work. I really do. The other thing is, and I would really be remiss if I didn't do this, but I, I want to congratulate Mayor Hunt for the many years that he gave to this city faithfully. He was a member of council from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and eleven, and he was mayor from two thousand and eleven to twenty-twenty. And to have, you know, it's one thing to do this job when you don't have a job, but it's another thing to do it when you are a full-time employee. In his case, would have been the shipyard. And I know there are lots of demands on him there. But I just want to wish him well, wish his family well, and hope that, you know, he takes some time now with his family and enjoy them, and, and just say to him that you did a, Mayor Hunt, you did a remarkable job, and, and this city appreciates it very much. All right. Any other comments from anybody? If not, we entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made in second that we adjourn. Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Ah.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Canela?
Aye.
And Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion is carried by the vote of six to zero.
Aye. Thank you, Kim. We are adjourned.